Bless your prayers.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you thanking you for this day. Heavenly Father, we just want to come before you now, um, asking for a special prayer for the events, the turn of events that's happened around the world, Heavenly Father. People dying, Heavenly Father, we just ask you just to please be with them, their families, Heavenly Father. Ask you, Heavenly Father, just to be with our leaders of this country, Heavenly Father, and I ask you just to please just be with them and burden them, Heavenly Father, to have them to make the right decisions, Heavenly Father. We don't have those turn of events here. Ask you, Heavenly Father, to be with our leaders, Heavenly Father, just soften their hearts for them to make the right decisions to lead our country in the way that it needs to be led, and I ask you, Heavenly Father, to please be with, uh, each and every one of us in this meeting today, Heavenly Father, the things here that we say, the things that we do that are pleasing to you. Ask you, please be with our military, our law enforcement. Just ask you, Heavenly Father, just to please continue to be with bless us, forgive us, and only fail you, and I ask you now to just please help us to just make the right decisions, and I ask you now, Lord, I just want to thank you for presenting your son Jesus down the cross so we could have him. I just thank you in Jesus' name.
Amen. Blessed is the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's be seated. All right, first order of business this morning, public comments. Ms. Maureen Kelsey?
If y'all want to come up together, that'd be fine.
Or y'all can come up separate, or whatever y'all want to do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Patricia Plann, I'm eighteen, four, and I know southeast of Eleven Place, Williston, Florida. We're here to talk about, um, Southeast One Hundred Eighty-Fifth Avenue. We've called Mr. Mike Jordan several times. It's been on the docket for a long, long time. It's number twenty of paving lists. It's, uh, three oh four Whispering Oaks. We, um, have called and petitioned and the countings been done on this road. What we're worried about is this road is a paved road, I mean, uh, the gravel road, uh, what is it?
Labrum?
Yeah. And during the wet season, the, the, the dust has kept down. During the dry season, it's not. The dust comes up so strongly and it, 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 you can't even see yourself. We've had near accidents on this. Yesterday, I was just sitting out there on the corner of Eleventh and, and, uh, Hundred Eighth. A little boy in an ATV came around and a truck came with, uh, he had a trail behind him, and they couldn't even see each other. Little kid came around, he didn't see the truck, the truck didn't see him. Kid went up on the lawn, the truck went over. They speed so, so fast. I mean, it, it was, it was frightening. This happens all the time. We've asked over and over, we've asked to have this road paved. There's no drainage on this street. The guy comes degraded, he's got his earphones on. We have, um, um, uh, leading into our property, we got driveways. He just pushes everything up against it, trying to get up onto our, our driveways. It's impossible, but the dust is the property. I live on the corner. I can't see for a whole minute because of the dust coming on my property. And I lived on the corner and it overwhelms us, over, totally overwhelms us. We're asking to please put on the docket as soon as possible before an accident happens because it is going to happen. It's not if, it's when. And I, I would hate to see a child, um, a, a person, an animal, anything be killed because of this problem. We called, we petitioned, um, if you want us to bring a docket, a, a, a picture of, of this, a video of it, the dust, but it will just show the massive dust and the cars coming through. It's going to happen, and this is a road that comes in and it's a one-way road into a development and one way out. It's going to happen. Let us know what we need to do for once and for all before this happens. I'm gonna let, um, Ms. Kelsey speak because she's on the, on the side roads. Please, let us know. I will present it, videos, petitions, uh, of the people who come to speak before it happens because it's gonna happen. It almost happened yesterday and it scared me to death.
Hi, look, I'm, um, Ms. Maureen Kelsey, and I live on Hundred Eighty-Fifth, I mean, Eighteenth Lane, and, um, I have to go down Hundred Eighty-Fifth all the time. And sometimes I can't see the cars coming towards me because of the dust, or the car in front of me because of the amount of dust coming up. I also have trouble because I have a little car that some of the driveways I can't get into without the bottom of my car getting the dust away. The way we road is graded. Also, um, we've had theory in front of our house floors fixed to a certain extent when we, I called the commissioners before from all of you. And, um, but we still have a problem there with drainage going to the high side of the road rather than to the low side of the road where they've got culverts. And it's coming, and it's draining from my neighbor's property down onto mine, and he's higher than the guy across the street coming. And another problem we have is when the road isn't graded, it's so bumpy and so many potholes. Those of us with back problems, knee problems, physical problems, it's hard on our bodies driving on the road when it's not graded. And it would be to our safety and our health as well if the road was paved so that we had a nice level road instead of the road that's sway in areas and has potholes and you have to go up like this to get into somebody's yard or over the hump to come back down. It, it's just, um, getting worse and worse than it used to be. And, and the road, instead of going straight, got, I don't know, he's not watching, he cuts out and you've got areas that are cut out into the side areas, so the road isn't even straight. It's going along and out this way and back this way. And if it was paved, it would be so much safer for everybody, for the kids, for the drivers, for the elderly with the, with physical problems. It would be, that's very much a safety hazard, you know, safety. For everybody's safety, but the, the dust is unbelievable. It is unbelievable, and you can't even see the fire in front of you because the dust's coming off. We don't know how far ahead of you it is.
So please let us know what we can do. We will do anything. We will bring all the people here, we'll make videos, we'll bring petitions. We've had the counters, it's been years and years and years, and we've tried to be patient, but it's coming, and we don't want to come here and say, we told you so, a child was seventy-three. Please, please, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is this wrote on the list, Bruce?
Yes.
I, I will, um, I'll fall on the sword. I understand what you're, what y'all are asking. Unfortunately, we have many, many, many miles of unpaved roads in Leavy County, and all of them have the same sort of problems. Um, you know, be, I don't want to say be thankful you're on the list, but, um, if you're on the list, that means that you have enough houses, that means you have enough traffic. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have endless supply of money, so, you know, we have to, we have to do things as we're able. We have changed policy. Used to, once you got on the list, you just hung out there and you worked your way up, but now we go out and we recount periodically, and so if, if you have more people moving into your neighborhood or more people, more traffic in your roads, your road will move up the list more expediently. So that gives you, uh, you know, a little bit of hope, but, um, you know, I could ask for a show of hands right now in this room, and probably seventy-five percent would say they live on, uh, uh, graded roads, and they have dust issues and they have the same sort of issues, and I sympathize with you. I live on one myself. But, um, it does sound like we have a, we have an issue with speed, so we'll contact the sheriff's office and give them an alert to, to go out and at least maybe patrol a little bit. An issue of ATVs on public maintained roads, that's illegal. Um, I mean, I hate to call this free for, for a young person, but, um, that's something that needs to be addressed because that's a safety issue for not only the person riding the ATV, but for the people who are traveling, uh, along these roads. So we have some, we have some Band-Aids we need to put on for now, but as far as promising you that your roads will get paved in the very near future, I cannot do that. But thank you for coming today, and again, your appeals did not fall on deaf ears from myself. Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Chairman, this is a question of county law.
Yes, ma'am, sir. And it's on the, it's on the list, so.
Ma'am, let me ask y'all a question. Because I've talked to y'all several times about this problem out there. When y'all brought that land, did the rutsers who sold it to you, did they make any commitments or promises to y'all? Did that road be paved, or how many years it would be before it would be paved? I just want to know.
They told us, me, when I bought the property in two thousand and four, that that was going to be paved. Eleven Place had been paved and, um, Skipper, what's her name? Skim Harley said Eleven Place would soon be done because that she had fought to get Eleven Place, and she said that, I guess you had told her that, that the, uh, that would be paid as well. And that, I bought that on the premise because I get all the dust.
I'm not disputing what they said, but I haven't promised anybody that road would be paved. That's why I'm asking you. When they sold y'all the property, they sold y'all with the...
The premise.
The intent that y'all, they were, the road was going to be paved within how many years?
Well, this is two thousand and four when I bought, and she's, and they said they'd gotten, two thousand, uh, Southeast Place had been paved, and she said that it had been on the docket, and she showed me it was on the docket, that, um, Southeast Ele- Hundred Eighty-Fifth was going to be paved. So that was in two thousand and four.
And she said I told her?
No, she showed me it was on the docket.
That it was going to be paved?
Yes, she did.
And I told her it would be paved?
Yes, and, uh, I mean, I, I can't even see out of my door, you know? Once you backed up far enough back from the road that I...
Y'all, y'all bought the land on premises that the rutsers told you it'd be paved?
I wa, I did, but, uh, and you know, it's gotten worse because we've got more people, and of course, they, they, I mean, I'm not talking, sixty-five miles an hour, and they have the cars and the, the zooming down there, and they cut away so they don't have to go straight, they do that turn, and so they cut in a turn so they don't even have to stop if it's straightaway. They go then do a turn, and, you know, it's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour? That's a joke.
And, and the stop sign you can't even see.
I mean, it's just, I don't know, the rutsers, they promised y'all stuff like that. Two thousand and four, I promised her I'd get the road paved. I wasn't even a commissioner.
Yeah, you weren't a commissioner, it was somebody else who was.
Yeah, I don't know how the hell I paid her. I just promised her.
Yeah, I mean, she, I mean, she showed me it was on the docket, so it's been a while.
We kind of ran into the same issue with, with flooding here just a little while back.
Yeah. But I just want to...
Yes, yes.
You know what our real estate company needs to do?
What are we supposed to do?
They need to chuck in some money and we'll have paved that road. They want to pay me because...
Listen, I would pay, I would, I would love, I would pay the money to, to my house, I would do that. Oh, but they just to pay the, we'll talk to Mr. Freeman, and, and then maybe we can get people to...
Well, you can do like a, uh, story.
Friend to pay, pay it, pay our, pay their friends with...
An assessment program.
We do something like that. I just don't want a child to die, that's the whole thing. And yesterday was unbelievable. ATV, they're not supposed to do that. I mean, that, we have so many children now that are doing this.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
Good. Yeah, the bond cards and, uh, and the ATVs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all. All right, public hearing, um...
Thank you.
Public hearing for PP fifteen dash oh one, West Point Acres. Mr. Hammond? While Mr. Hammond's on the way up here, does anybody have any export aid communications they could disclose? All right, um, we'll go ahead and swear everybody in.
Anybody who thinks they may testify on this preliminary plat for West Point Acres, please raise your right hand. If you swear affirm to tell the truth, then you're saying nothing but the truth, so answer it.
Morning. Let me have the fore news of preliminary petition fifteen dash oh one presented by Croft Land Surveying, representing Carol Kearns for a preliminary plat of West Point Acres, a residential subdivision located in section twenty-six, township eleven, range fourteen east in Leeve County. This parcel contains five point five acres, more or less, and is located in a rural residential zone. This subdivision consists of four one-acre residential lots, and this parcel is located in the Tupper Municipal Service District. This went before the planning commission on November second of this year. At the regular meeting, they recommended the board for approval. This is a pretty basic plat of three point five acres being broken into approximately one-acre lots for the purpose of residential homes. It does border on two paved roads, northwest Seventieth and northwest Twenty-third, uh, so all four lots have access off paved roads, so there's no requirements for easements or right-ofways to then come off paved roads. All of its applications in Easton page properly, uh, properly posted. We've had no negative feedback on it, and SAT does recommend approval.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hammond?
Is any dirt roads, pardon, is any dirt roads in there?
No. The only question I have is about Easton, but you answered that.
Yeah, they come off paved roads.
The audience have any questions for Mr. Hammond? All right, is the applicant here this morning willing to speak on their behalf? Mr. Croft, you want to speak for him? Okay. I guess with that being done, we're now open forward to citizen comment. We'll go row by row. We'll go by row one. Row two. Row three. Row four. Back wall. All right, we'll close this public hearing. Bless the pleasure of the board.
I make the motion we approve, uh, approve of fifteen fifteen dash zero one.
Say, we have a motion by Commissioner Jordan, a second by Commissioner Rockmeats. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. She carries. Uh, Ms. Catherine Frank.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you today. This is my third time of speaking to county commissioner over the last, um, three years. So last time was about a year and a half ago. I'm an assistant professor in urban regional planning at the University of Florida, and I have been speaking to you about, uh, some projects, uh, for planning for coastal change and specific sea level rise, and I had two of them funded by Florida Sea Grant, and so we just concluded the second one, and I wanted to tell you about our findings and recommendations. And so the two projects, uh, one was called Planning for Coastal Change in Leavy County, so two thousand and twelve, fourteen, and we, um, looked at the entire county in terms of, of the, uh, sea level rise and other coastal changes that are occurring. We gathered all the existing information, and we could find a lot of spatial information using geographic information systems to do some analysis, and, uh, we have a report that came out of that, and, uh, it's online, um, at our website, which is up there as the second bullet, changingleavyghost.org, uh, but it's, um, always nice to see it in print, uh, so I brought it for you to look at in case you haven't seen it yet. It's been funny.
Thank you.
Pass it around. Thank you. Okay, so you'll see in the report that we have a section on all of the county's coast, and then, uh, two sections focused on Cedar Key and Rosewood area, and then Yankee County and Inglis. And our second project, uh, reimagining coastal communities, uh, for that, we focused on Cedar Key and, um, Rosewood Summer for our, our analysis. And the idea with the second project is to just keep taking the, uh, information and the public engagement and your engagement, uh, and our ideas further, uh, because there's a lot going on with these issues and there are a lot of ideas about what to do, uh, but we really need to narrow it down into something that, um, that you want to implement, uh, so, and that would be effective. Okay, so, um, what I want to do with my presentation is give you a flavor of what we, how we think about, uh, what's going on after our three years of, of study and engagement, uh, like I said, with you and with, uh, citizens and other experts. So it's not a lot of data, it's more kind of like what, what is this all meaning, uh, that I'm gonna present here, but we'll have a report like that, uh, with all the data, and we can even provide you with the data and, um, information that we've gathered. So, okay, uh, here is a picture of Tropical Storm Andrea, came in two thousand and thirteen. So the storm surge was four feet above the average level, uh, which is, um, moderate. The maximum storm surge I've seen modeled for the Leavy County coast is around twenty-eight feet. So it could, you know, with a category five storm, be, uh, very severe, uh, but we haven't had anything like that. I mean, some people know, you know, some of the, the major storms in the past, like the No Name Storm in, I think, nineteen ninety-three, and, um, that was one of the, uh, higher storm surges, but it didn't reach that level. Uh, so that's sort of the context that we've got these coastal storms. However, there is what is in the profession called nuisance flooding, uh, where it's more, or sunny day, uh, flooding with high tides. And so here we have a picture in Cedar Key, uh, just last month with a, um, tide of four point one feet, the highest, uh, the king tide for the year was four point six, so it's close to that, uh, but this occurs, um, maybe every few months, um, something like this.
Naturally.
Yes, over, without storm. There's actually some rain falling here and some wind, but, um, not a lot. It wasn't anything like a tropical storm. Also observed during this time, uh, the same day, it, uh, was the storm drain not, uh, draining the street. So that's an issue of infrastructure, so we've got the rain falling, and then with the tide high, there's no place for the water to exit to drain. So these things start to come together. Uh, in Cedar Key, there's been a lot of erosion in some places, and here we have, uh, one of the, the main, uh, high erosion areas and, and all the rocks that have been put, put in place, which has saved that section, otherwise it would be gone. If you look at it on satellite, you'll see that there's a line where the erosion would happen naturally, but then a point jutting out where the rocks have kept it from eroding. And then here's on State Road twenty-four on that same day in October with that high tide. So it's not that part of the world, uh, which makes, made me think, well, what if it were a real storm, you know, like a big storm, and the road were covered, you know, about emergency, um, response. Uh, also, um, there was record flooding this summer in all of the ways, especially Inglis, and, um, not a main storm, just a lot of rainfall. And Leavy County's so flat, as you know, that it just adds up over the land and then comes, and it accumulated in Inglis in this case. And so here's a picture of the wetlands. Uh, so there's a lot of, um, it's very low lying, a lot of saltwater marshes and a lot of freshwater wetlands. And, uh, like I said, you, you would think just from, uh, the elevation of Inglis, that it would be pretty safe from flooding, but it had flooding from the inland coming down with all the rain. Another issue with, uh, with water, and could be related to sea level rise, um, but not necessarily, uh, saltwater intrusion into the drinking water aquifer, and so, as you remember, a few years ago, Cedar Key had a major, um, intrusion event which allowed them, you know, to be without water for several months and had to spend a lot of money on a new, um, treatment system temporarily and then looking at it long-term. Uh, so, uh, again, it's not, um, clear that this is related to sea level rise, but there, um, is a lot of interaction between the ocean water and the aquifer, and so people on wells could experience that more, um, you get more saltwater intrusion during storms, uh, like Yankee County had a problem, uh, years ago with that, with a storm coming in and leaving their water undrinkable for a while. And so, so it's kind of cumulative information, uh, for us, uh, as a research team, we, uh, just see water coming from every direction, and, uh, you know, the rain, the, uh, then, then goes along the flat low land and it builds up, and then the porous aquifer coming up from the ground, and then sea, sea level, and then sea level rise over time. Uh, so it's a convergence of water, and, uh, looking forward, there is projected to be, uh, even higher sea level, which will add more of the saltwater to the land, uh, during the regular tides, during, uh, the storms, and into the aquifer. And so here's just from the Army Corps of Engineers, and the, the span of this represents the uncertainty, we don't know. There are lots of different models, waves of scientists trying to figure out what's going to be the future sea level, but, um, it's uncertain, uh, but the range in, uh, green is, uh, the most probable based on the science. So, uh, by the year twenty fifty, um, half a foot to one and a half feet higher than what it was in, uh, twenty ten. And, uh, that is, uh, more than in the past where you see in the blue line, it was about seven inches over a hundred years. So, um, it's, um, rising faster than it has in the past, and, and so that'll, um, so we can't just go by how things have been in the past, uh, looking forward to the future. Okay, so what does that mean with storm surge? Well, uh, a new, um, these are new data that we generated. We, um, ran the CASIS model, uh, which is used by FEMA, to look at the hundred-year storm surge in Leavy County, uh, and with sea level rise on it. And so that's what we have here in the, um, medium blue is the base hundred-year storm surge, so using current sea level. And then if sea level rises, uh, half a meter, which is, um, about one and a half feet, then that's the light blue, additional land that it would cover, and then the, uh, hundred-year storm surge with, uh, three feet of sea level rise is in pink. So it actually doesn't add that much, um, more area of land that's flooded, but it'll make a little bit more flooded and it'll be deeper. Uh, so there's issues directly on the coast with more of that regular flooding causing problems and erosion, um, but regardless of looking into the future, there's currently a, a very high, um, coastal hazard due to storms. So you can, um, actually get ahead of the problems that you foresee in the future with the rising sea level by, uh, taking, uh, paying more attention to current hazards. Okay, so one, one of the main points is that it's not that, um, this issue of sea level rise is a hundred years into the future. I mean, the things that we're dealing with now are related to the changes in the future. Uh, so we have issues now, and... So we have issues now, and if we address them, then it'll help with the future. And here's just the same map zoomed in on Cedar Key with the base storm surge being the medium blue. And the same kind of principle of sea level rise isn't going to change the storm surge area that it covers that much, it'll just make it a little bit deeper. But there is a significant storm surge threat. Okay, and then, so we take these natural hazards and changes, and then add to it changes in the built environment, so new development coming in. So here's some property for sale in Cedar Key. And then here's new information that we generated for the project of development projections for the Rosewood Sumner area. So we have current development in black, and you can see, sort of make out on here where Rosewood and Sumner are, and, you know, Highway, State Road 24, you know, coming in towards Cedar Key. Just wanted to make sure you're oriented to the map. But we've got the existing development in black, and then the future development in that red, which is based on this model called LUSIS, Land Use Conflict Identification Strategy, which is the way it determines where future development will be, it's based on site suitability. So if it's closer to the main roads, if it's in a subdivided area, subdivision, you know, and platted land, then they'll be more likely to develop there. And it's based on the future population projections for the county that the state has developed or generated. Okay, so quite a bit of growth in Rosewood Sumner. Okay, so that will, the changes in the future with development will combine with the changes in the natural environment to create conditions that are different than they are now. And so when we pull back from all the information, we see several key dimensions for planning. One is what's going on with development, what's there now, and what's going to be in the future. And not just houses, but also all the infrastructure. And some dimensions where it's important to think about is whether it's centralized, like centralized sewer, or decentralized, like septic systems, or centralized water supply, or wells, and then whether a place is in a municipality or unincorporated. So if you can, if you think about those different bullets, then that can tell you about different ways to address the issues. So you may want to have one way of addressing existing development, but another way to address future development. And you may have different concerns for centralized infrastructure versus decentralized. And then, of course, whether something's in a city or it's part of the county would matter to you for policymaking. And then for the dimensions of coastal hazards, there's, like I said before, there's the extreme events, but then there's also the long-term changes. So you can think about just hazard planning now, or incorporate the future more, think about it more. And as I was saying, these things seem kind of combined to make different types of strategies and policies built, and so that's what those arrows represent. Okay, so in terms of policies, there's options of a comprehensive plan, and for that, there could be a whole coastal hazard area to consider to update. There's special area plans, maybe focusing on just Rosewood Sumner or the unincorporated Cedar Key, and then that would translate into ordinances and capital improvement plans. And there's opportunities for policy updates, or policy opportunities during plan updates and post-disaster. So you can't just say, well, this is a good idea, we should do it, you know, make some changes, there are better times to do it than others, and that's what this represents. Okay, so there's just the county. And then I wanted to point out that there are some portions of Cedar Key that are not in the city limits, specifically the airport. So the county may have an interest in doing special area plan for that area. Okay, so here's my last slide, the recommendations, kind of summed up, taking all those dimensions into account, there is planned, a comprehensive plan update, and I want you to know that in May of this year, the state passed Senate Bill 1094, and that requires consideration of future flood risk and the coastal element. So it takes a longer view, so you're not just planning for the current hazards, but how those hazards would change in the future. And that would be part of the coastal element of the plan. And within that, like I said, you could have an overlay where you, you know, a coastal zone that incorporates more of these future considerations. And I mentioned special area plans to really focus attention on those issues, because they're important to the county. So like, again, for Rosewood Sumner, the growth that's happening there, the kind of infrastructure, and how that relates to the changes in the natural environment and the hazards. And then infrastructure is important, so not just thinking about the comprehensive plans. And then there's this idea of a post-disaster redevelopment plan, which the state has given a lot of guidance on how to do that, and there's some pilot communities around the state that you could look to if you're interested in that. So a post-disaster redevelopment plan would say, when, let's say, a big storm destroys some development, you can ask in advance, would we want to rebuild there? Are we just either returning to the same hazard, or actually returning to a place that's becoming even more hazardous due to the changes? So it just lets you get ahead of things. And so overall, it's the idea of looking more into the future, combining all the changes, and doing some things, sort of start with the foundation of some policies and go from there, and that if we wait, then the pace of change will just pick up, and there will be more to deal with. So with the example of people, you know, moving into a place, and then, you know, it's a dirt road, and/or it's flooding, or things, you know, once people are there, they really want the protection, they want the higher amenities, and that may not be possible. So maybe not, you know, have people go in those places that kind of set you up for a tough situation. So just some thoughts that I wanted to share. And that's the end. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or comments.
Anybody else have any questions?
Always have questions, because I have a concern with the, what you keep saying, sea level rise.
Okay.
And I would like you to, Benjamin, in such great detail, explain to me and everybody else where the sea level rise is occurring from.
Okay, sea level rise is based on the amount of water in the ocean, and also the temperature of the water. So if the temperature of the earth increases over time, like globally, then the water will expand and take up more volume, and that'll make it be higher. It can also be, if the temperature of the earth is causing water on land to melt, and it flows into the ocean, it'll make more water. Another reason that sea level would rise would be a relative change, with the land subsiding with the same level, it would be relatively higher. And that's not happening in Florida, but it is happening in Chesapeake Bay, for example.
Okay, I noticed in some of your slides that you were showing, with what you were calling an extremely high tide, where it was coming up onto the roads in Cedar Key.
Right.
You know, keep in mind, one of those tropical storms that came in at four feet above normal sea level, it came in on a high tide, and it had a strong wind pushing it on shore. So that's kind of a misleading fact, as the woman said. The second one was, if I remember right, was October 27, which was a hunter's moon, which is the brightest moon usually of the year, and you have the border coming up there.
Right.
So everybody knows that the moon phases has a direct impact on tides.
Right.
So that's not, I mean, you're saying some good stuff, but you're also amplifying some stuff that are naturally going to occur anyway, in my opinion. Some of the pictures that you showed with naturally flooding, a lot of rain. You know, I'm born and raised in this county, and there's a lot of places in Levy County that people have built in that are naturally a wetland. There was, there's places that is, that would hold water, I can take you right out of here, 326 and 121, there used to be a natural lake out there on the right inside. Now there's houses built in there, and a little oak tree going down in here, and there's no pond whatsoever. So waters want to rise again, we're going to hold it. And I think my first year or two on the Little Kitchen Regional Planning Council, they were showing us that we were going into a forty-year drought, which was actually true from D E P. And they said after a course of time, then we would come back onto the uptake, where we're naturally replenishing ourselves again with rainfall, which is what we've seen so far. You know, I would tend to believe in erosion on the coast, because you have those surges that come in, and naturally it's going to pull back away, and it's going to take the sand and the dirt and everything with it. I would tend to agree with that, but I'm not wanting to agree with a natural increase in sea level rise. I can't do that, because there's a lot of, I've seen a lot of motion pictures that have come up with the fact, after Hurricane Sandy, or what was Tropical Storm Sandy, the canyon flooded, you know, up in there, they may have a lot to do with that, which was a bad thing. And since then, this has added on to the sea levels rising globally, warming, and all of this and that. And if I remember right, in the seventies, we were going back into an ice age. So, I mean, I have a hard time in understanding and believing what's being said out there on predictions.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not aiming to convince you otherwise, but I just wanted to throw in that tide gauges have showed that they have been increasing. So, I mean, there's some basic measurements from the past hundred years showing the increase, so maybe the question is more about how much is it going to, like, what's the future?
Well, if I remember right, not long ago, that the sea level rise, or something, had to be one-half of one centimeter over a certain amount of time, and I'd asked what the centimeter was, what the diameter size of it was, and it was about this big.
Right.
I think that's a year.
A year? Was it?
I think that's what, I think that's what we're going.
Well, it's been a long time.
So that's about the thickness of this year?
No, it's a little thicker than that.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not looking to, I'm just trying to relate the common sense and there's, as to what you said, and knowing that I've been here in the county all my life, and there's low-lying areas that's naturally going to stay wet.
Turn off that old?
I know I'm not, I'm a half a cent per year old. But, you know, prime example, the city of Williston is putting in water and sewer and underground electric to the new middle and high school that's being built over there. Put in water and sewer, they took out, or the construction company, Mr. Liffman didn't verify this, took out some oak trees down along the property line, so they can bury their water lines in there. And this was back in, when was it, June, July, Mr. Liffman?
About that.
You will still bog to your knees right there. It's just a natural wet piece of earth right there. That's going to hold water. So...
Oh, yeah, I mean, all of the wet places are there because it's wetlands, not sea level rise. I mean, I completely agree with that.
Yeah. And I have a hard time believing in the sea level rise, I really do, and I know that I've had people tell me, and I've seen one in the news, where the glaciers, the ice caps are melting, and that's why it's doing this and that, and that's why it's so hot. And then just as soon as all of that comes out in the news, maybe the next thing you know, everybody's freezing, slept to death, and you got some of this deep. So I don't know what to make out of it.
Is anybody else have any questions?
I think Ms. Tony will have a question.
I promise, yeah, we didn't hurt that girl. Good?
I'm mistaken, did I hear you say that within a hundred years, it would be seven inches higher?
The past rise has been seven inches in a hundred years.
Seven years?
Right.
Seven inches?
Seven inches over a hundred years.
Or deteriorating faster than what we ever had.
And it's really going to make a rap behind, because we're going to get somebody watching that's got a backbone, we ain't going to be here in a hundred years to see it, though. Hell, it's all people.
We'd ice this front. Ms. Tony?
Throughout Ms. Frank's presentation, I failed to hear her mention three government agencies that are the largest coastal property owners or holders in Levy County, and that's the Lower Swanee National Wildlife Refuge, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the Swanee River Water Management District. Did you interact with any of those agencies when you did this? Because I know for a fact that five years ago, Lower Swanee National Wildlife Refuge was conducting saltwater intrusion. I guess Mr. Schiff doesn't want to hear what I have to say. I know for a fact that they were conducting studies on saltwater intrusion. So did you interact with any of their, I'm sorry, I'm with Mr. Chairman. Did you interact with any of those?
Yes, ma'am, we did. We, we've been doing, you know, we've had these projects for several years, and so we've had a lot of public workshops, and we invited them, and they came, and we worked with them professionally outside of the workshops, gathered what information they had, and then shared our information with them. And I brought this map up just to show that, yes, there are a lot of public lands along the coast that are shown in green here. So that was a big part of our initial study.
And it's interesting that you say this, because most recently, the Swanee River Water Management District is negotiating to swap lands with an individual who owns property on a very critical piece of coastal land, and that individual wants to apply for a permit to erect a home. So I just want to make sure they know what you, what you can say. Ms. Karen?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, what Ms. Collins just stated, whatever that individual is, that brings me to my saying what I have said since I am coming to these forty minutes, and that is a long time. Namely, since nineteen-one, nineteen ninety-one, now.
It's like in the ninth grade.
What I would like to see is that the county put in the ordinance, what the lady mentioned, that we restrict development in areas that are prone to flooding, that they not be helped after a disaster, when they're supposed to know better in the first place, as Mr. Stevens was correctly pointing out. I would like for Ms. Frank to tell us how alleged sea level rise would cause saltwater intrusion. In my opinion, the Cedar Key saltwater intrusion was caused by excessive drawdown of groundwater.
I can respond just to the question about the saltwater intrusion. So the, right, the, yes, I agree with what you're saying about the saltwater intrusion in Cedar Key a few years ago, that it was at the end of this six- or seven-year drought, and the aquifer, the water table had dropped a lot. And based on the science of, at the University of Florida, Dr. Trevor Boyer, I'll mention his name, he did some analyses of the water, and thought that maybe the... and thought that maybe the, uh, saltwater had come up from a different part of the aquifer, uh, because, you know, there are different layers of, of the water and some are salty. And so it was drought-related, not sea level rise-related. And so the connection for that incident is not there. But there is, um, a lot of connection in the aquifer and there is, um, at least in, in principles, that as the sea level rises, it'll push the salty water into the freshwater aquifer inland. Where that is right now, uh, the only thing that we know is sort of anecdotal of people saying their wells have gotten salty, um, and changes on the, with the Kuchi River, but barnacles, you know, more upstream, those kinds of things. Uh, so that's a big gap in the science of, we don't have the modeling or the, the, the monitoring to know exactly where it is. Uh, so I just, um, you know, I try to be clear and not amplify things. Uh, I just mentioned that saltwater intrusion to say, it's something we're familiar with, but in that case, it, you know, drought-related. But it is an issue, and like I said, anecdotally, I've heard it in terms of people's wells, um, becoming more salty and...
But does your research give any, what's the word, uh, proposal how we remedy that situation?
Well, my recommendation would be to have a better idea of where the saltwater, um, is pushing in from the coast before having specific recommendations for strategies. So, more, like I said, modeling and monitoring of the water supply. Um, it's very complex, it's hard to really get a handle on what is, um, going on. And, and because of the location here in Levy County, uh, being fairly rural, the water management districts haven't put in much, you know, they don't model this part of the, the state.
Would you repeat that, please? Say it again?
Me?
What you just said, yeah.
Um, that we don't have the science because we're fairly rural and the water management districts have been modeling the intrusion of saltwater in the aquifer and other parts of the state where there's, uh, higher population, like cities, like Jacksonville and Miami and Tampa. Right? But we're, we're kind of in between all that and don't have the science.
The three largest water management districts.
Right? But it's an issue.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you, Ms. Frank, it was very informative and, uh, your book, I will, uh, have a chance to look through it very closely, but it definitely has some beautiful, uh, photographs and some great stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Really?
And I would be happy for...
Wow, it's nine o'clock yet.
Um, any other time if you have more questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Get rid of the presentation here. It's yours.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Wilbur, you'll present for Ms. Cielas, she's not gonna be here this morning. Uh, this is the town of English, or excuse me, the town of English and Yankee Town's request, uh, for the crate myrtles. She, uh, I guess sent a letter and Wilbur's gonna present on her behalf because she has some health issues.
Yes, Ms. Cielas, did call me yesterday afternoon and sent me a letter this morning to ask to be read to y'all. Uh, our mayor, Ms. Deb Wees, and Dorinda Merritt presented the Department of Transportation a plan to enhance C forty by planting crate myrtles and ground cover on the roadside of previous commissioning. They explained the concerns and, the concerns expressed, and it is my hope to dispel these fears. D O T has already planted crate myrtles on U S nineteen in English and in other areas, and it's my understanding that they are little or no danger to vehicles. I am sure you are aware C R forty has many live oak, water oak, cedar trees, palm trees, and pine trees on the county right-of-way, which pose more of a safety issue than the deboarded crate myrtles proposed. Both town mayors have agreed that these trees, which require minimal care, will be maintained by the counties. We also have our Yankee Town, English, Woman's Club, Mini Mastery Gardeners, and a community garden group available to assist as needed. The proposed grant cover will help the county reduce mowing, mowing and maintenance once established. In addition to the crate myrtles, we are currently working on grants to install new solar decorative light poles and light path lighting to improve the curb appeal of our towns. We are working with our neighbors in Marion and Citrus to connect the bike trails in all three counties and to extend ours to the Gulf. Yankee Town and English are working to not only improve the look of our town, we are working equally hard to increase ecotourism for the Little Kuchi Gulf area. It is our only source of sustainable income for your small businesses. Your consideration for the beautification program will give us a great visual start to make Yankee Town and English move forward to improve our image and enhance the image of Levy County, respectively, Ellen Cielas.
Uh, Drew, some lean on you, uh, how do we currently maintain this area? With a bush hog type tractor or do we?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
And so, and it would be... We would not be able to do that. My problem is, I'm thinking this is gonna create a, a nightmare for us, maintenance-wise, because we're gonna have to change our method of how we maintain. But I understand, you know, they're trying to beautify their community. Um, I think if, if, you know, my, my, my line of thought is I have a problem with it as long as they will take over the, the maintenance of the right-of-way, the groundscape and, and that sort of thing, so that we're not having to make a special trip down there with a zero-turn mower or something to mow around these crate myrtles. You know, the, I was down there the other day and noticed that the state has some crate myrtles in the median on nineteen, but I think they catch those up with the prison crew, you know, or the people who have the contract to mow, you know. We don't have that luxury.
Whatever.
That's my thought, I mean, I'm happy for it as long as they will maintain.
Yes, I think, I mean, a lot of it, uh, depending upon the, how far they take back from the edge payment, you know, so we may be able to get something right down the edge of payment. They say they wanna put some ground cover, so you may not have more in between them, I don't know. I, I can say so. But I don't know how they gonna actually plant them, it's hard to really say, you know, what kind of impact that have.
That's what I was thinking.
If they're maintaining them, the better job they do, the better off they'll be whenever they mow.
You're right.
So, that's my thoughts. Have you all say or do what you think?
I'd say whatever structure they wanna put them on, if they'll accept an agreement from us that they're gonna maintain it, then I'm content with them taking care of the full maintenance.
The mowing.
I mean, the mowing, not the mowing.
I find the crate myrtles, I think, look great, and I think it's doing with a great deal. I mean, it's helping with the crate myrtles. My only question, the same one I had last month, or last meeting, and that's Annie, I guess it goes to you, Mr. Rick. Somebody runs off the road on a motorcycle or car. Those trees are planted on our right-of-way. Who's gonna be held civilizing?
Like I said the last time, it's... It totally depends on what happens there. If we have negligently maintained anything there, then we might be held responsible. But it, it's no different than you've got the oak tree there now. Negligently maintain that to contribute to that accident or to the injuries, then they can look to you for recovery. If you haven't, then you're not responsible. So it totally depends on the circumstances of the accident, what caused the accident, whether it was condition of the road, whether it was negligently maintaining a tree. So, we would look to pass that on. If you all want to have them maintaining these, we would look to pass on that responsibility for the maintenance.
Well, that would go back to what Mr. Meek.
Square.
But then, I mean, if they wanna maintain them, I don't have a problem, but I think crate myrtles, great, I got them in my house. And they do take a lot of maintenance care back every year. But we're not gonna be held responsible or liable for, I, I won't have a problem with it.
Ms. Kelly, I mean, uh, Ms. Brown, would that be like the agreement we have with them on South Levy Park? Of course, the city has a perpetual lease on that, it's board liability, and was it anything like that?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lease, it would be like the agreements we have with D O T, where they install the fixtures and we maintain. It would be similar to that. And I would also look in the agreement, making notes from what Mr. Greenlee said, to have county review of the planting plans to make sure the trees are going where we want them to go so that they can be maintained.
Ms. Karen?
Mr. Chairman, if D O T is the one that provides the money for the project, can we hold them liable for the results of what they are funding? Why not?
Because they're not doing the planting and they're not doing the maintaining.
It is paying.
That's the question here before the board is, who does?
The cities have volunteered to do planting.
Is it on, uh, first of all, is it, uh, county property, city property, or what?
County right-of-way.
Why is there a question here?
Okay, so far so good, now, uh... They first of all brought it up, it's a non-agenda item this time. I understand the lady has medical problems, I'm sorry to hear that. Nonetheless, what I mean is, to me it looks like, so the fact, uh, there's a pure funding from D O T, D O T say find this ass, that is very greedy. And if anything happens, the county will be responsible. Is that what D O T says? Is that what?
I don't think D O T has said anything about this responsibility. They've given them money to beautify and plant the trees.
That, that agreement, what you just told us, the movie, that would be similar to the F D O T, uh, agreement? Is this, would that apply here?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand and question. If, if, if that, the F D O T agreements were they pay for and, and they install the, the signals and we maintain them, I would look on that agreement for some assistance in, on the grass.
I am this. I would suggest, the woman said that the who's maintaining it, the city or the county?
That's the question.
That's why we're trying to...
I don't wanna be on the hook for maintaining them.
Amen, the city maintains.
For those of you, ma'am, I've been committed to a maintenance.
Maintenance proposal, do you need to write that up? Forward.
The board could direct me to write an interlocal agreement for the city's plant and maintain the trees and take the responsibility for any liability that he does back in the day.
We have a crew that...
Do you need that in form of a motion?
Tractor that travel and they mow.
Consensus of why?
And, uh, you know, they, they go from basically job site to job site along the roads. My, my concern is, is if this section of road requires additional maintenance, that, you know, we're gonna have to make a trip down there once a week, once a month, whatever, to do this maintenance. I don't want any part of that. If they'll sign off that they will do the maintenance and the upkeep, then that's, they can use our space. That's what I, that's what I think we need to, to look at, but I'm looking for a motion.
Well, if we can just get a general consensus, and Miss Annie to write an interlocal agreement, and for Rick to present that to the city of Yankee Town, and see if they, and Yankee Town, and see if they agree to it.
Uh, that's fine with me, I think if we do it in form of a motion, we don't have to come back with it. We go forward.
Yes, I can come back with the final agreement.
But we wouldn't have to come back to then have, whatever. What do we all wanna do?
Consensus works for me, emotion works for me.
Okay.
Just enough input, enough of it to say, do the agreement, I'll come back.
I'm good with an agreement. Ms. Stevens? Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. George?
These two cities or towns have worked very hard over the last several years to come together and work their problems out. I think that we need to be ready to help them because they're trying to make their cities better. And we serve the same people.
And it will help us if people come there to sightsee or spend time or whatever, so. Again, I don't have a problem helping them, I just, I don't wanna take on a huge liability as far as maintenance.
None of us do.
Mr. Barney, do you have a question?
Oh, just a statement. One, let them have it. Two, make sure they maintain it. Three, chainsaw option.
All right, moving on, uh, Chief of Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Ryan Watson, you sat here patiently this morning.
Thank you, sir, I don't know if I can follow that or not. I just, uh, take a moment of your time, thank you for seeing me this morning. I'm here to request on December twelfth, the city of Chiefland does their annual Christmas festival. As part of that Christmas festival, we do a fun run. Do you find it fun to run? I don't. Um, it's a five K, and I'm requesting that we do a temporary road closure for an amount of time not to exceed two hours of West Park Avenue from Second Street, the county road three forty-one, and from three forty-one north to Eleventh Avenue. Basically turn about Old Beecham's Hardware, shut it down at three forty-one to the school, turn north, and then come back. The city of Chiefland has agreed to provide barriers and set them up, and I will personally be there to take them down as soon as the last runner comes back, open the highway back up.
So y'all, somebody will be able to, to man these barricades in case we did have to...
Yes, sir, we'll have water stations there and somebody will be with the barricades the entire time, and then I'll be coming behind them to make sure they're moved back into ditch.
Anybody, any questions for, um, Mr. Watson?
I'm sure it's only gonna be two hours.
I believe that if that's a mile and a half, I can probably walk in two hours, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that, that time limit on it.
If it's me, it's gonna be five hours. But I'm not...
Well, if they do, I'll pick them up in the gator and I'll bring them on back.
Any other questions?
I'm thinking, well, we've been cutting the roads down.
I'll second. Motion and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please see the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize, I'm a chairman from a coffee. I've been looking them on, building camel sickle after fifty years, didn't help you too.
This don't wanna happen again. Have you guys split out by bay? Crime Stoppers, Levy County, Ms. Paulus Fray.
I see her.
There you are, here.
I don't see her. Uh, basically what she's looking for is approval, requested chair signature on a letter to the Office of Attorney General to support the Crime Stoppers. It is a letter we've done forever and ever and ever.
It's an annual, it's an annual letter.
We have a motion and a second, and is there any further discussion? Is it none? All in favor, please see the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. English Recreational Committee, Ms. Lisa Flans.
Good morning, morning. I'd just request a road closure for our December twelfth Christmas parade. It's the same route, as you can see, that we do every year. And, uh, I was told to request more enforcement and security support. This is something we request every year. I guess we need to go down there and let them know.
I think the, the chair will assign some assistance on control, something like that.
Right. It starts at four o'clock, it usually ends about six, close to six, and then we do a Christmas party.
I'll second, I'm, I'm familiar, I go to it every year, I don't think y'all do it once a year. It is one bed parade.
You sure?
It's just a little bit long, old man, the walk, it's a good parade.
Yeah, you have to get one of those county commissioners' cars, all right together.
Look, we got it, it's a fire truck.
So we'll look forward to seeing you on the clock?
Yes, sir. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see you again. Department reports, Mr. Moody. Man, if you'll tighten up, man, we're getting back on schedule here.
Okay. This shouldn't take long, we have two little items this morning. One is, we received, it's in your packet, a letter of request from the Levy County School Board, Mr. Jeff, uh, Edison, asking for assistance in picking up and transporting four loads of clay from Frostproof to Chieflin. Uh, they are in agreement to resupply the county for the fuel, uh, either way, even in payment or we could just go fuel up at their fuel station. And, uh, so those four loads, now's the good time as any for us, and the sooner the better, if y'all approve it, because we don't have any projects going right now, so the trucks are available, the drivers are available, those that are not home or otherwise right now. And Mr. Stockman is here, if we have any questions.
Breezy, anything you wanna say?
No, sir, but appreciate anything that y'all would consider. We're just trying to cut the costs down to the taxpayers, uh, whether we have to get the clay. So whether we have to pay a private contractor, uh, it's all coming out of public money, so we're just trying to save costs where we can. Whatever we need to do to make that happen, we're looking to do.
I think it's a one, five, they're gonna be helping the school board, the school board, they have us, we're, we're in person. Not, not the way it should be, we're all here for one reason.
Without Levy County School Board, I know that me and Brock would be here and Miss Lily. I mean, I don't know, he was maybe under the king's educational system.
I'd say it's a matter of opinion. I'd say it's a matter of opinion, you get to, they were four times.
He was a tax dollars. So I think he was a true red devil, that's why he.
I think we need a motion.
I make a motion, that's a little hard.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second letter, or second request I have is, uh, an annual request for a letter of support for the North Florida Economic Development Partnership when they apply for their regional rural development grant. And all fourteen counties in this always sends a letter of support, and we've done it annually for some time. And Ms. Brown has looked over that, it's, it's good to hear.
I don't know if you're gonna have that.
You'll get it when you sign it.
Okay.
We gotta pass it before we go up there.
We have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just a reminder, it'll be three weeks before we meet again December the eighth, but that is the date that we set for the workshop on being back feet, uh, with yours and things like that.
That'll be nine o'clock, Mr. Freddie.
Uh, eleven o'clock, I'd have to wait before me to figure out the shop.
All right, Levy County Transit and Miss Connie, she's already up.
Good morning. Um, the first item I have is, um, we're requesting approval for the DOT's, um, Florida statewide drug and alcohol testing service contract. I had put the original contract we had, so this will be for the effective January one of two thousand sixteen, December the thirtieth. Um, we have new rates that, um, that go along with it as well.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Aye. I second.
Second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, the last item I have is, um, I'm asking to request approval to purchase a bus in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars to be reimbursed at a hundred percent. This is Shirley Conroy, rural area capital brand. We pay a major cost upfront and they reimburse us a hundred percent, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Miss Connie.
Question, Tony. Who is Shirley Conroy?
Actually, she was a lady who started with the TD Commission back, back in the seventies, I guess it was, when they first started the TD Commission. And, um, she was a major part of that, and she has, she's still actually alive, and, um, they came up with a grant that she wanted to help the rural, it's only for the rural areas.
And she has helped Levy County considerably.
Yes, ma'am, she has.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a little history.
Ms. Shirley, good morning.
Good morning. Um, this is, this item is under the shift department, this is a motion to approve, um, a deferred payment loan improvement for Bradley Parker's PA five thirty. This is in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, it happens to be in the city of Chieflin. It's at ten, nine fifty northeast twenty-seventh court. And that recommended approval, um, as presented.
Make a motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Knowles, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Two items on the agenda this morning, and I have one informational item I'd like to reword. On November second, the city had come to visit Levy County EMS and do our yearly inspect, our bi-yearly inspection on the EMS service for Levy County. And I report back that in all the areas that they inspect, personnel records, records and storage, service records, basic life support, life support vehicle requirements, equipment testing, um, we received that, no deficiencies, and received an outstanding inspection report from the state.
You're on with them.
Um, this does not go without all of our work from our employees, a valuable asset to employees, but this is the second year in a row now that we have received an outstanding inspection by the state. It's usually about a three or four hour inspection, we do for department records, all of our personnel records. When they go off to the stations and visit one of the units, depends on how many units they're in. And actually go through, do a hand on inspection of all of the units, so check how many bandages you have, how many batteries you have, make sure everyone's working, actually test the suction equipment and oxygen equipment to all the vehicles, on the vehicles that they inspect, so. But that could not have been done to elaborate some more about, without the accomplishment, and I've done with all of our great employees and supporting board of county commissioners. As you guys are our leaders in that respect, and our employees, but this would not be successful without employees who've been just trying to help and working along with us. We thank you for the commission for their help in doing this, for the projects we have going on over the last four years, which dramatically increased and improved our service delivery by firing the EMS to citizens in public. By doing this, though, we've also worked on several projects that, if it's possible. We, we've done this with the allocation of funds that the board has given us. We've not had to come back to this board for any additional funds throughout our budget years. So we've been able to make significant improvements through proper planning for equipment allocation, equipment purchasing, and we have not had to come back to the board for additional money that has been allocated from the day one of our budget cycle. When we talk about employees, our current employee staff, we have a attrition rate roughly about twelve percent over the last three years of employees that have left. These are full-time employees, roughly about six, six employees per year. And we complete about twelve percent of the attrition rate for us. National standards for EMS attrition rate is roughly between twelve and, I mean, between twelve and sixteen percent. So we're still working on that as well, but we are coming a little bit under with the national standard for attrition rates through our EMS services. But how are we looking to accomplish that, work harder to retain our employees, that's always a project for recruitment and retention. It's been, been very successful, our support responder program that we have in place now, that we started about three years ago. Um, of those support responders that we started with, we've been gradually bringing more and more in over the last couple of years, and currently right now, we have fourteen support members. Um, of those support members, uh, they came in with absolutely no experience in the EMS field. Some of them might have had paramedic certification, but didn't get a job anywhere. Some might have EMT, or finished school, and did not have any experience anywhere, and was hoping to get a job somewhere. So we opened up the opportunity through our support responder program, basically as a volunteer program, where they can come in and get the experience. But through that program, we've picked up three full-time employees through that program, and now we currently have seven employees through that support program now working for us part-time. So we're trying to attract the youth of our organization, we've been very successful working with the Chieflin High School Program and the College in Chieflin. Last year, we had, I suppose, four, thirteen EMTs graduate to high school at dual enrollment program, the EMT program. So we're working to address those as well and work with that. As well, working heavily on our grant programs. We've been very successful since my arrival, working with grant programs. To date, we've brought in three hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars, seventy-five cents in grant funds for our department over the last four years. So that's helped offset capital when we've had to purchase, upgrade throughout those last four years. This couldn't have been done without the great assistance of our staff as well. Writing these grants, working on these grants for hours on end, helped bring additional funding to the county, helped us become successful. It's three hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents within grant funds in the last four years, which is what they found for our service to operate effectively and efficiently. As well as building constant improvements by our neighboring contiguous counties. We're seeing, if you, if we had to go out and buy some equipment, we received donations from our county, or contiguous counties to us, we've been over two million, over two million dollars worth of equipment that we retained from other counties helping us with Levy County. But then again, we've also donated equipment back to other rural counties that have helped them, Bradford County, Lefae County. So we've been good neighbors on both sides. The equipment that we've received and donations, we've been able to return those to donations to other counties that are striving financially constrained as well. So that's just a short synopsis of how we've gone to our outstanding inspection and staff has put us there, so this relies on all our employees. We couldn't have done this without employees, because everybody out there in the field doing this job, I'm just in the tail of the boat, steering the road, keeping us on the same vision and on the correct path. So once again, I thank all of our great employees and the board of county commissioners for supporting our mission and keeping us on track forward.
David, one quick question. The, uh, two young men that we had up here, I think it was.
Bill, Bill and, Bill and, the two young men that went to the national, the state national.
Yes.
Cause we, we haven't finished doing the press release, and we're still getting information and pictures from them. They were successful up there, I think there was people from all over the United States, and they made it, if I'm not mistaken, through the first two sets of competitions and eliminated at that point. But that was just a phenomenal success for Levy County. However, that is two EMTs represent Levy County at a national competition in California. So we have more information following up on that, sir, and that's what we wanna track. We're trying to do through our organization, because they have family ties here, they have tradition in this county, and that's what we want to retain, and that's what we wanna bring into these school systems.
What I was needing to hear, where did they end up at?
They were June, they were eleventh grade, so they're in twelfth grade this year. So they, it's double way to go yet. None of them is applying for, um, Naval Academy, Pleasantly Naval Academy. So we'll be coming back to some of y'all for letters of support for him.
Good work. David, I have one question after, and I think I asked you the same question last year, but with public knowledge as well as the press. Does DEA still come in here and do our inspections on drugs or on ambulance?
It's combined with my state health, um, inspections, they, they verify our locks, how we lock our controlled drugs, how we monitor our controlled medications, how we store them, temperatures. That's all done through departmental health. Um, we usually only receive an inspection unless there's a complaint or something filed, so.
And congratulations on the inspection, as well as y'all.
It's not many of the employees, so, so.
I said it once, and I'll say it again, you gotta have a good year, have a good year.
That's it, we're working on it every day, sir. So it all have room for improvement.
Mr. Chairman, how many full-time employees we has at present?
Roughly fifty, ma'am.
What, what's the?
Roughly fifty, that's fine.
What do you mean, how's the?
I don't have that exact number right in front of me, Miss Connie.
Okay, fine, um. And how many part-time employees?
Roughly fifty-two point five. One's still in process.
I'm the four, five.
All right, move them along.
First item on the agenda today is, prior to my arrival here, we purchased, the county purchased seven physical, physical control Life Pack fifteen heart monitors, and with those heart monitors came seven modems, and this is the information we used to transmit our Life Pack to the hospitals to receiving facilities that have the capability to receive those, which includes North Florida Regional, Shands, Ocal Regional, and then River Regional Hospital, they will receive our transmissions from our heart monitors. With the change in technology, with the telephone systems and, and different networking, these were all three G technology, I'm sorry, two G technology within the wireless communication system. So those seven monitors, when we purchased those, those had the old techno, had the old technology. As of February two thousand sixteen, that old technology be out of sleep, and we would not be able to communicate with the hospitals. We've purchased four or more heart monitors since that time, and all the new heart monitors do have the upgraded modems on it. At this point in time, I'll be requesting the board to approve expenditures of physical control for five thousand, three dollars and twenty cents. Now, including in that, we've worked with Shands Hospital and the Cal, North Florida Regional Medical Center, and both facilities have agreed to pay fifty percent of that funding, so it'd be completely wash for us to make mutual change. We'll be expending the funds first, and we'll be reimbursing us the funds for these modems. Requesting board's approval for the purchase of the se, of the seven modems at five thousand, three dollars and twenty cents. Make the motion to approve.
Sir.
This text line makes more sense than I read it in our conversation.
It's hard sometimes in the country.
You gotta talk so fast.
What?
Anyway, is there, are there any further questions? Yes, ma'am, Miss Connie.
Um, Mr. Knowles.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear you say Seven Rivers? I don't think I did.
So I'm pretty sure Seven Rivers does that, anyone say, ma'am, so it's not a hundred percent positive.
Was in your monitoring?
Yes, ma'am, they have to have certain equipment at the hospitals to receive our transmissions. So I double-checked on Seven Rivers, I'm not sure.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I don't care to go over to the others. That would be my choice.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
At this point in time, um, requesting approval for a purchase of one vehicle and one rescue body module, which is a fifty percent, this is a budgeted item for this year's budget, is planned. During the planning process of budgeting during last year, these funds are in budget, they have been allocated in our capital expense lineup of budgets. Fifty percent of these funds will come out of the EMS budget, fifty percent of the funds will come out of the fire budget. The, we're requesting approval for one in two thousand sixteen Ford, four fifty chassis, cabin chassis from Coggins Ford in Jacksonville at a price of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cents. Now with that price, we had also shopped the price in Florida Share Association, and where we get a dollar price, and what was noted on the Florida Share Association's package. Including that is a one light rescue module from emergency taxi vehicle in San Francisco, Florida, for one hundred and four thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars. This is also the same company that owns our current transport units in the county that we currently use, so we still have all the same servicing staff and everything else. Been very pleased with the service that we received from our vendor with our ambulances.
David, can you better explain what a light rescue module is?
Yes, that looks like similar to a small rescue truck, it's the new supervisors' vehicles that we'll be moving to, to better equip the supervisors during daily operations, trying to maintain where the vehicles, our transport vehicles, do not have to come into the main logistics warehouse and pull them out of their current zones, their current coverage areas, and be able to restock transport units on site. So if we have one coming back from hospital, they use a fair amount, their equipment, all of their equipment, they'll be able to rendezvous with the supervisor somewhere in the county, and be able to offer their stuff onto the transport unit supervisor, they'll restock that vehicle. They'll also carry our spare heart monitors, also carry our spare IV pumps, so be carrying it. They'll also be carrying our narcotics, secured narcotics, and climate-controlled refrigerators on those units as well. They also can make care of command modules. They also can make care of command modules, of commands and control radio equipment for disasters and events that happen on a daily basis. This is a twenty-year life expectancy. Twenty, twenty-year life expectancy on the box. Our plan is just like our sprinters to reach chassis of box after the chassis wears out and be able to recycle that chassis somewhere else in the county system. We try and keep our first out primary units roughly at two hundred thousand miles and rotate them to reserve status. So we reach, have planned to reach chassis these every three to four years because of mileage and hours they've logged on the vehicle.
Just looking through here and seeing the other part of it. See Charlie in the back, hiding, and he's looking to play forward in this minute.
Yes.
Miss Cannon, you have a question?
I was kinda wondering when are you gonna start gravitating toward the mine?
I don't, I don't this part of it.
The two thousand sixteen Ford F four fifty chassis?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that for an ambulance?
No, ma'am.
We're talking about the lightweight rescue module.
That's only the emergency one, so.
Talking about the whole thing, truck and?
Talking about the whole kit, the boot.
Truck and the chassis. And the reason why?
Let me ask you this then. I said we got, uh, Ford has.
Made it to our back.
Yeah. Tony, you wanna answer the reason behind the Ford product versus the others?
One, the Chevrolet does not offer that body, or that, that chassis size. Dodge does, but at a more expensive rate from what Dave just told me. Anything I can learn there?
Do you recommend Ford over Dodge?
Well, especially if the reason we just recently had some issues with Dodge, Honda Dodge we do have now. Take a long time to get repaired, their, their technical support is not near as good as Ford. Ford with Ford is much better. I can drop the vehicle off, get it back pretty quick, and excuse me, fix it right the first time. Dodge perhaps some issues, it just won't be done as quick as I would like it to be.
How about the maintenance issues that we had with the board a few years ago? Has that been resolved?
Well, they all got maintenance. No, I'm talking about. The motors, they're, the six seven is a much better motor than they had on the six O's and the six fours. As far as I know so far, we've been doing real good. We have two Amazons online that has the six sevens. No very minimal problems with them, EGTs, and we know that, we can take care of ourselves and take care of, you know, fix it pretty.
So you're comfortable with the Ford product versus the?
Yes, sir. We also have the IDM computer that was provided from Ford. We own it, we have subscription to it, so we have any tech conditions, we go on and do it ourselves. Not like the Dodge, we can't get it. We can get it, but it's very expensive, same thing with Chevrolet's, very expensive to get it, and the Ford is pretty, I think, one foot ahead.
Miss Cannon, would you like to finish your question?
Yes, please, sir. So, does two thousand sixteen Ford F four fifty chassis?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, why doesn't come from Hoggins Ford instead of the Cheflin guy?
So Hoggins was the chief on Ford, they're not submitted price for the man.
I see, okay. Now, that's only part of the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what is that vehicle, that chassis used for? I mean, what is the vehicle used for that the chassis belongs to?
If used for. Miss Cannon, if used for supervisor's vehicle.
Okay, and, um, that supervisor vehicle, what functions does that carry out?
It carries out the twenty, they supervise the twenty-four hour day operations, every day's a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year of the operational component of our service, but the fire operations, emergency medical services operations. They also provide ALS non-transport care while our transport units are out of the county. So in the past, when we didn't have supervisors on the road, if you had a patient and you had no more ambulances left in the county, you'd wait on Marion County, Lachey County, Citrus County, Dixie County to come and help. So now we have some big vehicle that, like we have, currently have now in the county all the time. Unless there's a crazy disaster, but they're here all the time. It's a, it's just a different style of truck that goes for supervisor, you'll carry spare equipment on it.
So it's used for EMS as well as fire?
Yes, ma'am. The supervisor's on the vehicle management.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And the reason why they're two, listed two separately is when Sandy Hack and I do our assetting, when we dismount the box off the chassis, we have two separate asset numbers. We have an asset number for the actual box and asset number for the chassis. So as we asset our transport units, we found that problem to occur in how to split asset, one asset and then we have two components. So that's why we do it separately now.
Now you're fixing it. Wait a minute, you're, the new one that you're getting outfitted right now.
I'm hoping to have that out by December, ma'am, James, by the middle part of December.
Is it the older Dodge?
That was Dodge. Um, that's what we're planning to do. And this truck right here, we want to get right order now of this. We won't see this truck here in the county until August, September next year. Fabrication, ordering the chassis, and everything else. It's a long.
How much does an ambulance cost?
We just, we just processed on this past year, one hundred and forty-two thousand.
We're spending one hundred and forty-two thousand on chassis and box?
Yes, sir. Different application of the vehicle.
How many people's going around in this vehicle a day? One?
That's, that's the command staff, that's.
One person in a vehicle for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and. One forty-three? I did the math wrong. How many miles does a gallon of this F four fifty get?
Well, Ford doesn't give an actual mileage for it, so I ask around people, just drive around, say, hey, what do you get for mileage? And they're saying angry between twelve to fifteen, and all the pounds you're gonna get.
How many miles a day?
Yeah, five, three hundred miles a day. And the, and the thing to take in consideration, this is a twenty-year box life. So this box is from the last, it's for twenty years.
Oh, now it's gonna be the best box that they can build.
And we, and we add.
The box in any question. I think you're a lot of great box. To me, it's the price of the whole deal. And what it's gonna cost taxpayers for that truck to go around the county with one person at three hundred miles a day.
This is, this is operating the system, it's a part of the system operations and, and how, how the system operates.
Yes, ma'am.